Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council Workshop for October to set our agenda for our November meeting. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Mark to do our prayer. And Heather, will you do our pledge tonight? If you'll all stand with me, please.
Father God, we just come to you again today with thankful hearts, Lord, just for another day and good health in a town that we all love and want to see prosper. Father, we pray for those that are continuing to watch over our town, all of our first responders, police force, fire department, and all the employees and staff. All those people make this town run better, Father. We just thank you for them. Lord, as we enter the end of election season this year, Father, we just pray your hands are all over this country and that you help guide and make the right decisions for what you see as our need. Father, also, we have local elections. Father, we just pray for all the candidates and the time and the willingness to pour themselves into trying to make Smyrna what they perceive it to be and make it a better place to live. Go with us now as we deliberate this meeting and be with us in all that we do and forgive us where we fail you. It's in these things we pray. Amen.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thanks, Mark. Heather, our first item is public comment. The town's public comment period shall be reserved for those citizens who have signed up to address the town council or a board or committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting pursuant to the town's public comment policy. Speakers are limited to three minutes and additional comments may be submitted in writing. Amber, any public comments tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We'll move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Presidio to purchase hardware and service to upgrade the town's phone system.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Great.
So, this is a request. Our phone system is definitely in need of replacement and needs to be upgraded. So, this resolution will allow us to procure the necessary equipment and services to make sure that gets done.
Questions for Carl on this? Okay, then we'll put that on the agenda. Item three is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Waypoint for the firewall installation services.
This item is, we basically decided to make a technical change in our firewall architectures with the need to purchase a number of them for the new fire hall and some of the things going on, plus some scheduled replacements. We made a change in the technology and to do that, we want to go through and do an inventory of all the rules that are in the old firewall before we move them to the new one and only move the things that are necessary. And then, you know, really just use the professional services to help us get those done.
Okay. Questions for Carl on this? Okay, then we will put that on the agenda, move on to item four, which is approval of the, oh, wait, that one's the same one.
No, it is slightly different.
Okay. Approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Waypoint for Firewall Management Services.
So, with this change in technology, we currently have a vendor that we use with our current firewalls to help us manage and administrate, keep the security rules up to date. This will be moving that service over to Waypoint under the new firewalls as they have the expertise in those areas and will actually save us money. It's less cost than we're currently paying the current vendor.
Questions on this one? Okay, then we'll move on to item five, which is approval and authorization for the revisions to the Police Department policies pertaining to appearance, assigned vehicles, and ITS CCTV cameras. Hey, Chief.
And Council, as we continue through the CLEIA process, we're continuing to revise and update some of our policies. On the appearance and uniform policy, it's just streamlining some of the language, removing some things that we thought we could take out and just make it for better clarity, streamline it. Assigned vehicle policy, the one thing we changed in it is, in the efforts for recruiting and retention for some of our officers, we're trying to expand out the radius for the take-home vehicle. Most jurisdictions around here went to a 50-mile radius. People are having to live out further to be able to afford to live certain places. So, a lot of the departments are expanding their radius for take-home vehicles. So, that's one of the things we've gone kind of join in with that and try to increase our radius for our take-home vehicles. With the cameras, we're just trying to increase our ability to capture video if necessary if there's a violent crime or incident in the town. Accessing these cameras and being able to record up to three days will help us do that as we build toward a real-time crime center that I'd like to see in the future. To me, it's a force multiplier for the department. With this, this access to these cameras, it has an SD card, but it's only limited to three days. So, after three days, it's purged. So, within that three-day window, we are able to capture something if need be.
Did I say that Murphysboro has started that? The division, the crime suppression division? Did I say that a couple months ago?
I think so, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Questions for Chief on any of this?
Chief, on the radius, is that going to have an immediate impact on some of our officers that were not in the program that will be in now?
Yes, there's several that live to further south in the county. So, literally right now, they're, it wouldn't change the policy as it was before that much because most of these officers, some of them are driving 35, 40 miles already. So, it would give some officers the ability, if they wanted to, to live out a little bit further to save money on housing. And it's just something we've heard from some of our candidates coming through, like, you know, they look at these other departments, they see the radius, and they're wondering why we don't have that. So, as we've interviewed people coming in and trying to get new recruits, it's an issue that's come up.
How are things going with the CLEIA accreditation?
It's going well. We're, you know, like I'd mentioned before, it's going through a lot of our policies, just trying to clean them up. Eventually, CLEIA, when they do come on site and start reviewing everything, it'll just get us ahead of the game a little bit. I'm sure there's still going to be things we have to do, but we're trying to prepare ourselves as much as we can.
Okay. Questions for Chief? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda, move to item six, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with a Tennessee Rehab Center relative to recreation fields used by the Parks and Recreation Department. Hey, Mike?
Mayor, Council, thank you for looking at this again. This is the annual agreement between the town and Tennessee Rehab Center over there on Eighth or Ninth Avenue. So, there's nothing different here, just another update for use of the 2025 year. So, basically, we'd like to continue use of the athletic area over there for the 25 seasons, about a six-acre area. And most time, it's our baseball league that uses that for practice. It's right along our Greenway, so we had the contractors mow that annually and we maintain the rest of the premises, bleachers, backstop, that type of thing.
What about parking? I know sometimes we've had issue in regards to parking over there.
Right now, they want us to park on Ninth. It's been, it depends on what year it is. I figure we'd revisit this as we move into the next season. So...
I know sometimes parents with multiple kids and trying to get over to the far field is kind of difficult.
Yeah, I'd like to work on that again. I think it's more of a security issue for them after 4:30. Sometimes that gate's open, sometimes it's not. So, last year, I know they wanted us to be on Ninth.
Okay. Questions for Mike? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda, move on to item seven, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute the renewal of the Smyrna Greenway Trail lease properties with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is, this is a 20-year lease, and there's a couple of typos in here. So, just so you know the terms, you're going to see a date of September of 2023. That is actually correct. It's taken that long to get it through the process of the Corps of Engineers. I had actually called them about that, and they said that was correct. Also, it also states a, in text, a 50-year lease, but in parentheses, a 20-year lease. So, actually, that is a 20-year lease. So, it'd be 2023 through 2043. And properties include areas along Ninth Avenue, Weekly Lane, the boat ramp area at Stewart's Creek, and behind John Coleman School. And if you look in the back of the packet, you'll see a lot of the pictures and areas that you might be familiar with. And it's pretty interesting in the lease, when you get it back of when they got the areas for, from the, for the lake in Palmette, there was a lot of deeds in there from, from the old days. So, anyway, they would like to give us a 20-year lease, and I'm behind that for sure.
Questions for Mike on the Greenway lease renewal? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda, move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute change order number 11 with Cleary Construction for the Genie Lane Extension Project.
Hey, Mayor and Council, just to let you know that the project has been completed as of Tuesday. So, that was the final punch list items were taken care of. So, the project for the roadway and utilities has come complete. This final change order is just for the contract reconciliation for all items associated with it. So, we zero balance out the contract with Cleary.
Questions for Charles on this? I know you're glad to get that one done.
Yes, ma'am. It turned out well. The streetlights will be coming in. We're working with Milton's Electric now to get the final design and get our contractor ready. And that will be our next item out there is to install the streetlights.
It's really being utilized already.
Yes, it is. I've noticed it in the traffic.
You can tell it's taking the strain off of Sam Ridley.
Right, and then pulling the traffic off of Genie Lane up from Chick-fil-A down through there, back into the roundabout, moving that traffic back out. So, it is working well.
Great. How long will it take to get the streetlights done when they start working on?
We have a meeting tomorrow with the contractor and Milton's Electric to go over the plans and get them, it shouldn't be too long, but like I said, I think a lot was added by Milton's Electric due to having to get the power on down from where it is now up on Wolverine. So, that is why we're having to go back and rework the design plans for the streetlights. But it shouldn't be, it's only seven streetlights, but the conduit and the other power transformers that they have to install is going to be the biggest item.
Will those be LEDs?
Yeah, they'll be LEDs. Now, that's all that Milton's Electric is. Going through anything that's changed out goes to LEDs now.
Charles, I use it, it is, as I said, it's really nice. As far as budget, how'd we do on it?
As far as the total, they came in 8% over contract, which for most, usually your average is like a 10%. But, yeah, we came in 8%. And a lot of that was due to design errors that were, items that were left out, plus we went down Wolverine a little bit further behind Academy to tie in better and not put our pavement markings back on old asphalt there. So, that made the project come together better and then get down Genie Lane in front of Verizon, back down that way to get a better tie-in there.
Was the contract number the budget number, or was it, was the budget different than what the contract number was?
That, like I said, we're about 8% over what the original contract budget number was for final, the change orders total.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Okay, then we will put that on the agenda, move on to item nine, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute the proposal with Hayworth Meyer Boland Professional Engineers LLC for the survey and design for the Rock Springs Road over Rock Springs Branch Project.
Mayor and Council, this project, this is for survey and design on Rock Springs Road. This is near the Genie Lane widening where the developer widened to their, their side. But on the opposite side, during a TDOT inspection, they found that we had a beam there that was having some issues. Right now, it's not a safety hazard, but it will be in the future. So, that's why we're going to go ahead and fix that beam on the side, and then we'll be redoing the guard rail on the existing side.
Where again is this turn?
It's right, the bridge there at Quinn Farms.
He didn't mean Genie Lane.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
He had Genie Lane on the brain.
Okay, still had that one. I hadn't switched gears yet, but I'm sorry. Quinn Farms, yeah.
That's where I was picturing it, and then I thought Genie Lane. It's like, wait a minute. I don't think that's close to that.
Rock Springs Road near Quinn Farms. I have a lot of Rock Springs Road bridges.
Do we know, have any idea what it's going to cost to repair it? I mean, this is very early in the...
Yeah, like I said, they're just doing that now. They're still working, like I said, this just allows them to start the plans work to get in, to see how much it is going to be to cut that one beam out and repour that. Hopefully, we can go as well as the Rock Springs Road over Hart's Branch coming in and cutting that out and reinstalling. So, that project went really well. But this will get them started, and we'll see what it, you know, goes from there. And also...
Wait a minute, let me ask the question. Are we looking at putting a sidewalk on this also?
No, no. All we're doing is just putting the beam back in the garden.
Should we not?
No, it's on the existing side. So, there's nothing, we never touched the existing side. The sidewalks is on the development side. So, it's already there. There's no sidewalk.
There is one there. I didn't know. I couldn't remember.
No, there's nothing on that side. On that side, it's just the bridge rail and guard rail.
But there is a sidewalk on the opposite side.
Yes, on the opposite side on the development side. And the contractor, the developer, he contacted me today that they're going to get back in because they still have to put their guard rail there. And then on down on Waldron Road, he contacted me today that they're looking to get a contractor in to finish that out.
Okay, other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item 10, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Neil Schaefer for additional construction engineering and inspection services associated with the ITS Phase Three, Four, and Five Project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you know, Neil Schaefer is working, is doing the CEI oversight of ITS Three, Four, and Five Construction. And when Gresham Smith originally did the design at the time, there were certain fibers in place and control, items in the control cabinet for the intersections. And what had happened is that we have the I-24 Smart Corridor project came in and changed a few things with their project to complete it. So, now the plans that we have are correct for most of the intersection locations. There are a few changes that need to be made. So, we are going to take some of the money from the existing budget that we have and move it to a different phase and different task to allow Neil Schaefer to take Gresham Smith's plans and make the revisions they need so that the, so it matches what's actually out in the cabinets at this time. So, it's not an increase in the CEI budget, but it is a change to the agreement that we have with Neil Schaefer for them to perform this different type of service for us.
Okay. Questions for Tom on this? Okay, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item 11, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute the bid package for Phase Two of the Basin A Sewer Rehab.
How are you?
Great.
So, you've, you have in your package the attached bids. Morgan Contracting was the low bidder. This is Phase Two of the ARP project where we'll start, this will start somewhere around Branch Trail on Rock Springs, and we'll follow the creek all the way to the wastewater plants, about 9,500 feet. This is scheduled to be done by pipe bursting. There is some, a little bit of fluff in the bid package for incidentals. There could be some rock here. If there is rock, it would be at a different cost and be a change order. We don't know how much at this point, but we'll deal with that as we move forward.
But this is ARP funding?
Yes, the, there is ARP funding for this. Now, it is over the ARP amount, which we would pay cash for the difference.
Okay. Do you remember what our amount of ARP funding was?
Right at 3.9 million.
Okay. Okay. Questions on this? Seeing none, we'll put it on the agenda and move on to item 12, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Thomason Hutton for an additional year of the sewer flow monitoring.
Yeah, this would be the fourth year of this. And what this does, it places flow meters in the basins to determine the appropriate place for the next inspection, cleaning, I&amp;I projects as part of our C-MOM program that's required by TDEC.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, moving on to item 13, is consideration and authorization of a list of items to be auctioned through online surplus sale with GovDeals.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, there's a list of surplus items that we would like to sell at auction. The list includes computer equipment, two town vehicles, two seize vehicles, and other equipment that's no longer needed. We are seeking permission to sell these at auction. The auction will be advertised in the Murphysboro Post, on our website, and on Channel 3. And all the surplus items would be sold through GovDeals.
Dave, you can pick you up a Christmas tree on here. Looks like even maybe some Christmas shopping items. Xbox, Tommy Hilfiger boots.
It's the mayor's favorite place to shop for bricks.
She picked up a Gucci belt a few years ago.
Oh, any questions on these items? We will put those on the agenda. Item 14 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with GNRC, the Greater Nashville Regional Council, to conduct the verification of the special census. Hey, Kevin?
Evening, Mayor and Council. This, as Council's well aware, we are conducting a special census as allowed under TCA 54-4203. As a part of this process, the town is required to have third-party verification of the information compiled as a part of the effort. And it's the approval list of vendors available to conduct this verification are the nine development districts scattered across the state. GNRC is on that list. They have agreed to conduct the verification at a price not to exceed $58,018. They have stated that based on recent verification efforts that they have conducted, the town can expect the cost to be 50% to 60% below the quoted maximum cost. They did several last year in some of the surrounding communities, and that's what they found as they conducted those verification efforts. I did attach the contract they sent as well as the fee schedule.
I heard the other day on the radio, Murphysboro was doing one. I thought they had decided not to.
They had, that's what they had said? They have decided they're, they are conducting with that. I actually met with them. They wanted to meet with me to kind of pick my brain a little bit on what we've done so far and those kind of things. So, but yeah, they are.
Do they have the same timeframe we do, and they're starting this late?
They did, yes.
Wow.
I thought they were starting a little late, but that's, they're doing it. So, good luck to them.
That's right. We hope they get a lot counted as well. Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, item 15 is consideration and ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map 33, Partial 73.03, to go from R3 with ESO to PRD with ESO requested by Janet Ibrahim Nasif. And the property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 2.1 acres and is located on Rocky Fork Road, and this is a second reading.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request on Rocky Fork Road. It's about 800 feet east of the intersection with Ennis Springs Road West. The land use plan does designate this property as part of our 24 gateway character area, which would support a mixture of uses and services of both local and regional in scale, such as hospitality, retail, restaurant, and multifamily uses. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PUD, which is the addition to villages of Valley Green PUD, which is to the south of this property. This proposed PRD is for five duplexes, so 10 total units. Each unit will be 1,989 square feet, including a two-car garage with three bedrooms. Exterior elevations are required to be stone foundation, brick on the first floor, and cement siding on the second floor. One access point is shown to Rocky Fork Road with all units being accessed off of the internal private street. This does allow within Ennis Springs overlay, so all units, or I'm sorry, and the proposed elevations are, as required by the planning commission, would meet the requirements of that overlay. We would review landscaping, lighting, buffering, and screening if this is approved at the site plan stage. Sewer would be extended through an existing public utility and drainage easement that exists adjoining the site to an existing sewer manhole within Gamblewood Drive. The planning commission did recommend approval with one condition that, for them to revise the architectural elevations to show brick on the first floor for all four sides of the structures. And with that condition, staff would recommend approval.
Kevin, a couple things. So, the drawing you have on the screen is not what's in our packet. The front two duplexes are turned towards Rocky Fork.
They've been turned. Yeah, that was, we need, with the plan, there is the plan, I think, that should be, the revised plan should be in the packet.
It is. That was for guest parking and stuff that we wanted them to have.
Yeah, that, one is on the screen. You're correct. The one that's on the screen is not, not correct.
Okay, so the one in our packet is the right one?
Yeah, yeah. They're, they've been, those two end buildings were rotated to face Rocky Fork Road.
Yeah, perfect. And then the other question I had is, I was looking at the elevation designs, and I was site planning to get some of this, but when you put on the, the back walls of these are pretty much, you know, two-story walls, and then their design, they're all concrete, or in a...
Cement siding.
Cement siding. You're talking about the brick all the way around.
Correct.
How does that transition work if they just do the first floor and that the rest of that wall ends up being cement siding? Or how does that work? Is it just, they just brick up halfway and then?
They would have brick. You probably have some sort of...
Little brick shelf.
Brick shelf there at the break, yeah.
I just couldn't visualize it. As I was looking at that picture, I was like, it kind of seems a little funky.
Other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item 16, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map 48G Group F Parcels 1.00, 2.00, 3.00, 4.00, 5.00, and 6.00 to go from R1 to R4. It's requested by Josh Newman. The properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately five acres and are located at 308 through 330 Chicken Pike, and this is a second reading.
Yeah, these are six parcels of land on Chicken Pike between the intersection with Old Nashville Highway and the, the other leg of Chicken Pike where the two come together there. Land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is R1 and PRD, which is the Cantor Farms PRD in town and RM in Rutherford County. Each of the requested parcels has an existing duplex on it. These appear to have been built in 1983 or 1984, and the area was annexed into Smyrna in 1992. So, they were built in the county prior to being annexed. So, assets there legally non-conforming within the R1 district. These parcels are not currently served by public sewer, and CUD has indicated that, but fire flow does exist in the area. The planning commission did discuss the potential for redevelopment of this, and so that certainly could happen, certainly. And if the zoning has changed, and so there could be additional tracks created if that were to happen.
It's very limited, though.
It would be limited. It wouldn't be all over a ton, but there could be more potentially because this was, again, developed in the county on septic systems and those kind of things. And so, the lots are bigger than what could potentially be there if they extend sewer. They would, would be required to extend sewer to redevelop it, though. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Unanimously, staff would also recommend approval.
Questions?
I think when we discussed this previously, like, even if they divided this up, they pretty much with this zoning, they could only add like two more units, I think, is what you said. Is that right, Kevin? Something like that?
Yeah, two to, it could be three. It just kind of depends on how they reconfigure it and how much road frontage. You know, I was estimating based on GIS measurements as far as road frontage and those kind of things, yeah.
So, it's a small increase if they decided to redo that.
If they decide to.
Pretty much have to tear everything down and reconfigure everything.
Unless the trade-offs, they would look a lot better.
I was going to say, that would be the improvement that we would get because it's, right now, it's 40-year-old duplexes that don't meet any of our design standards.
Right.
So, okay.
Other questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Item 17 is consideration of an ordinance to amend Municipal Code Title 12 Buildings and Utility Codes, Chapter 4 Mechanical Code, second reading. Hey, Kristy, how are you?
Fine, doing good. Thank you for, so this, this amendment will be for the mechanical code to require permanent steps or pull downs in homes instead of the scuttle holes that are currently in the homes. So...
Questions for Kristy? We've talked about this quite a bit.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. And we'll move on to item 18, which is consideration of a resolution setting dates and times for the town council meetings for calendar year 2025.
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to take this one. Before you and your packet, you have a resolution that is proposed. As you know, we set all of our council and workshop meetings on an annual basis by resolution. In working with Dave and also with Kevin Rigsby to determine planning commission dates and kind of work the council dates around those, we have proposed the following dates that are listed within the resolution. I put on each of your desks, there was actually... I put on each of your desks, there was actually a typo on the proposed revision sheet that is included in there. I will fix that for the upcoming packet. But printed out on your desk, there are actually a few revisions that we're proposing to upcoming meeting dates just to kind of stay away from holidays that come on meeting dates next year. The first one would be December thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. We had a meeting set. We are proposing that we move that to January seventh, twenty twenty-five to stay away from the holidays. The January Planning Commission will also be rescheduled for Thursday, January ninth. So, we would have two workshops in January essentially. The November twenty twenty-five regular council meeting will fall on Veterans Day next year, and we are closed that day. So, we're requesting it to be moved to Thursday, November thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, which would be two days later. The November twenty twenty-five council workshop falls on Thanksgiving Day and is requested to be moved to the Monday of that week, so November twenty-fourth. And that falls in line with kind of what we're doing the week of Thanksgiving this year as well. We have it on that Monday evening rather than on Thanksgiving Day. The error that was on your sheet in the proposed revision is that next one, the December twenty twenty-five council workshop would fall on Christmas Day, and the planning commission would fall on New Year's Day, which is that following Thursday. So, we're proposing that we, again, not have a council workshop in December of twenty twenty-five, but push it to that next week, the first week of January, which the council meeting would fall on Tuesday, January sixth. And the planning commission for January, or would be January eighth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, questions for Amber on this?
If we move forward with these, can you send invites to everybody?
Sure.
That makes it much easier.
Yes, once it passes, Casey will be updating all of the calendar invites. And then the only other thing that I wanted to bring up, which is on that revision sheet, is at the last joint meeting of the council and the planning commission, you guys expressed wanting to start doing those on a quarterly basis. Dave and I spoke, and I think that we're going to hold those on the same quarterly basis as the stormwater meetings are. So, they would fall in January, April, July, and October. And we will schedule those at four o'clock prior to the workshop.
Okay. Questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item nineteen, which is consideration of an appointment of one member to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve an unexpired term ended in twenty twenty-five. I see that we have two current applications. But if there's someone out there that would like to submit an application, there is still time if you think you might want to be a part of the BCA. So, okay, anything under other tonight? Dave, anything under other?
I've got a few things this evening. First, just want to say thank you to everyone for welcoming me in. It's been a great experience over the past couple of weeks and very happy to be here. Want to thank staff for the excellent job they did on their presentations tonight. Whenever we get these, you know, and it's not often that government gets kudos for doing good things. We certainly hear when we don't do well. But here's a good one, and I just wanted to bring this to the council's attention. But our water department, we got kudos from a gentleman, lives out in Clarkstone Square. And we had a water break. We had our water guys go out there in the wee hours of the morning and get that handled really quickly. And the gentleman was really thankful for that. And so, he sent that in. And I believe actually he sent that in to you, Councilmember Short. So, thank you for forwarding that to us. We appreciate that. And not to, not to give too much credit to utilities, I got another one for them too, though.
They'll dedicate.
Currently, we do have, we do have some gentlemen who are deployed to Irwin. And they're over there assisting. They're going to be installing, I think, a six-inch HDPE pipe for a forced main. And so, want to recognize those gentlemen who are deployed out there in less than desirable conditions, but doing that for those people over there. So, just want to thank you for sending your people, and we hope that they're doing well. Please keep us abreast on that.
Kenny, do you have anything else?
I have some slides. I don't know if this is the time or if there's another slide section.
Not yet. We'll get slides in a second. You're good.
Okay.
Okay.
You'll learn to slide on out of here.
Nate, anything for us tonight? Rex?
No ma'am.
You looked hesitant there, Rex.
I was like, it sounded like you were thinking a long time.
Charles?
Yes ma'am.
Ah, come on down.
Apparently, we did not abuse you enough tonight.
Uh, no. This is good, the good news. Just bring you up to date on some road projects. The Nissan Drive right turn lane onto Jefferson Pike, that project is currently advertising for bid, and it will open on November the nineteenth. Washington Street at CSX Crossing, TDOT and CSX have approved our right-of-way easements, and we're preparing that project to bid on December the thirteenth. And Jefferson Pike, the TDOT project out there, speaking with the contractor, they're looking to have four lanes open by January. And then they'll come back in the spring to do the final pavement and pavement markings. But we should have all the signals and lanes open by January.
Great. Questions?
Don't we have the roundabout that's underway as well? And then the parking lot over behind Front Street's coming along pretty good too, right?
Right, well, that, the roundabout on Front Street will be part of the CSX Crossing. Tom and Utilities, they all have a Front Street project that they're gonna have to rebid. But this will be the roundabout and CSX sidewalk crossing project.
Will that make any change in the roundabout itself?
It will put a raised curve that'll look much like Genie Lane that, right now, you just have the imprinted brick that people cut the roundabout too sharp. So, we'll raise it up about a two-inch curb on it. That is mountable, but it will push vehicles a little bit further out into the roundabout to make it function better.
I had another question, too, on the Jefferson Pike right turn coming off of Nissan, going to bid, you said probably in November?
It's currently out now.
Out now?
Yes.
From that standpoint, from that process, I'm not holding you to a timeline, but how's the process look from now to when that might be a completed project?
That one, I had to go back and look about my construction days on it. I think we just had maybe four months on that one.
Just an estimate.
It'd be a quick project.
And what about the double left coming from the other direction?
Double left, currently that project's in TDOT initiation that we have submitted it. We've gotten our grant funding with the carbon reduction program. So, we've got our grant funding there. So, that is at TDOT, ready to get that project started.
And what about a time process? The estimate?
Probably be, they have a year for design, a year right of way, and then we'll start construction.
So, a few years?
It'd be two years probably for that project will.
That's needed so badly on peak hours.
It is.
It backs up all the way to Thornton's.
Right. I know Jonathan's worked really hard on the signalization there. And we've got the left turn flashing yellow. They went on and installed that as part of Tom's ITS, but the contractor for TDOT, they just went on and changed it out since they knew they were coming back, so.
Both those will help that intersection tremendously.
It will. And then, like I said, we'll get that upgraded. But like I said, it'd be two years probably before we see construction on that one starting.
One more question. Old Nashville Highway and Sam Ridley, what's the current status on that project?
That one, everything's been approved. The bid package, the advertisement, currently we're just waiting on TDOT to give the notice to proceed once they receive their notice from federal highways that the funding has been secured. So, everything on that one is ready to go.
Charles, we'll go back to Jefferson Pike. As far as the four lanes, is that all the way from eight forty to Nissan?
Yes, it is.
Including the bridge at eight forty?
Yes, all lanes should be open, everything but final payment should be done by January. Or then they'll be doing punch lists, the items. But the most of that, it'll be open for the laneage and all the signals should be in. And then they'll come back in the spring to do the final resurfacing.
And I know, I think it's been brought up before, as far as old Jefferson coming on to Jefferson Pike, is there anything looking at that? Or you think, I think some people thought there might be a red light there, but I know there's not scheduled to be.
No, there's not one in the plans. That's something we will look at after the roads open. But that would come back on to the town to do that if it warrants. We'd look at it then.
All right, thanks.
I'm glad to hear you say that because I feel like it may warrant at some point, but.
Yeah, there's, we received an email, I think Mayor and I received an email this week about a similar request at Montgomery Way and Rocky Fork, no Rock Springs. So, I think there's several places around town that kind of get to the point where we might need to look at them, but.
Right, well, it's part of the safety grant that Tom's, you know, study, we're doing that in the other multimodal that Kevin's doing, that they're also looking at those intersections as possible.
I was just whispering to Steve here that Bentree may need to be looked at at some point soon, too.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's crossing over really three lanes to go in the other direction.
Right.
Okay.
Wait, sorry.
While we've got him up here, might as well just.
Hey, you came back up. You could have stayed in your chair. Maybe you'll learn.
It's easy, Charles. I know she have lights.
I'm sure Dave will have a talk with me, just say no. Just say no.
I know she have lights on the mast arms at Jefferson Pike. Do you know when they'll go live or anything?
No, where was that now?
Yeah, it is. It's right there at Gil's.
Yeah, he's saying, are they live?
No, they're not live.
Oh, the new, no, the new lights aren't, I'm not sure on the schedule, but it should be by January, all that will be done. So, I would say January, when they open all the new lanes, that and at Hickory Grove, that they will not bring those on until all lanes are open. But it should be January.
They're also doing the mast arms at Weekly, correct?
No, that's a different project.
Well, I know, but still, that's what's going up there, right?
Right. Well, on that, Tom just put in the crosswalks and he's putting in pet crossings there. So, that's the only upgrade there is just for pets.
He's throwing you under the bus, Tom.
I'm just trying to.
Sounds like somebody didn't wear mast arms to me. That's all I'm saying.
These are all on strain poles, there's no mast arms. There's no mast arms to order on these, they're all on strain poles.
Contrary to belief, there's a lot of infrastructure stuff going on right now. We could probably, we could probably ask him about five more intersections.
Clarification at that Weekly lane? Did you say there are no mast arms, but the crosswalks are what are being put at Weekly?
At Weekly and Sam Ridley, that is just putting in pet crossing signals there.
It's stress poles. That means a straight pole going up. I've learned something tonight.
Stress poles, strain pole, yes. Yeah, it's just a single pole, no arm.
Well, we wouldn't be able to get them anyway.
Any other questions for Paul?
I have an additional comment. And, you know, a lot of these intersections that we've been talking about, we hear the residents talk about, too. Charles, Tom and I, and the consultant, a few others, we met on the study activity that they're getting close to completing, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, we're probably at a point now where we're gonna be wanting to bring y'all back in and the public to show the results of that. Because a lot of the things that we're talking about here, and a lot of the things that the residents are talking about are part of this study, and it's a path forward to looking at a lot of this stuff. So, it'd be really good to see that, I think. So, we'll go ahead and get that scheduled here at the appropriate time, but it should be sooner than later.
Great.
Don't we have public meetings involved in one of those studies? Kevin's study, I think?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, thanks, Charles. Oh, is there anything else?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
You did learn.
Carl, anything?
No ma'am, not learning.
Jeff? Tom? Kevin? No? Christie? Okay.
Come on, Mike, book the system.
Charles is our spokesman.
Todd? Chief? Heather? Chief?
The boss.
Uh, Amber?
He's never gonna learn.
No, he's never gonna learn. Never gonna learn.
Now it's slide time.
There you go.
I do have a slide tonight. So, as Kevin was talking about earlier through the agenda items, we are conducting still our Smyrna special census. The mailers have gone out. We have started getting those back in. There's a picture of those there, so you can identify those. It's a bright yellow piece of paper. So, please, if you get a stack of mail, don't discard that. Please pull that out and get it filled out for us and send it back in. There is no postage required. All of that has been taken care of by the town. So, you literally just have to fill out the form, stuff it back in, and put it in your mailbox. And those will come to us. I think that we've already entered over a thousand addresses just this week. So, it's moving right along, and we are hoping to have our second mailer go out after the election. So, maybe the second week of November. We're hoping not to have to do a third mailer, but if we need to, we will in order to cut down on some of the boots on the ground and having to send our firefighters to so many addresses. But we're getting there. Just take notice of that piece of paper. And if you don't want to charge us postage to send it back in, then you can always call up to Town Hall and give that information over the telephone at six one five two six seven five thousand five. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
Amber, what's the return look like so far?
Uh, I mean, I think we're at twenty, almost twenty-eight?
Twenty-six thousand eight hundred.
Okay, so almost at twenty-seven thousand citizens that we've accounted for. It went up, and then there was kind of a dip after the schools. Because with the schools, we got a lot of duplicate forms because we had multiple families that had kids in different schools. And we sent them home with all the schools, and they filled one out for each kid and sent them back, and we entered them. So, they went through before our first mailing and kind of cleaned some of that up. So, it took a dip for a second, and now we've recouped for all of that, you know, duplicate. And we've now surpassed what we had before we cleaned the system out. So, it may look like it's a little stagnant, but there's some behind-the-scenes action going on with some cleanup of duplicates and things like that. So, we're trying to keep it as accurate as possible.
And so, the public is aware this is a tax-saving effort.
Correct.
For our citizens. So, by getting them counted, it can help them save us from ever having to charge of additional tax.
It does. We get a hundred and seventy-five dollars per person in state shared revenue from the state of Tennessee. So, we wouldn't be eligible for these funds until at least twenty thirty-one without doing this special census. So, it's kind of a, you know, midway point in between federal censuses that we just really want to get out there and try to capture that growth.
So, it pays to turn it in?
Yes.
You good, Amber?
Yes, ma'am.
Dave, you're up with your slides.
All right. Just the first one, I want to make sure everyone knows that Town Hall and the administrative offices will be closed on Veterans Day, which is Monday, November eleventh. And we will be doing a Veterans Day celebration that day at eleven AM at the Jeff Cusman Memorial, I believe is where we do it, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, offices will be closed that day. Want to retrospectively thank all of our first responders for National First Responders Day. That was just earlier this week. And we honor those who have served us, protected us, and everything that you all do every day. Greatly appreciate that. Chiefs, thank you very much. Also, we are working on a banner program. And what this is, it's a, really is a partnership with the city and small businesses throughout the town who have the ability to have some advertisements on our banners. And these will be placed within Lee Victory Park. So, some of our businesses will be getting calls or letters from the company that we're working with. It's an opportunity, it's not a requirement. And it looks like this could be a real win-win for both the town and small businesses to have advertisements on our banners and nice locations, prominent locations throughout the town. Also want to, we already mentioned that, you know, I did see the parking lot there behind Front Street's moving along nicely. So, that pavement was going down today, and I'm sure the landscaping and things like that, light poles were going up. So, that was really good to see. And then, last but not least, Halloween is tomorrow, so I wish everybody a safe and festive Halloween.
Great. Jeffreyelle?
Nothing for me. I don't believe I even have a slide.
We'll have to fix that for next time.
I'm good.
How's it feel to be in your old seat?
It's good to be in the passenger seat again.
Raquel?
I have a couple of slides. Let's see. The first one is, there was a fundraiser that was held at Smyrna High School for Coach Devin T. Ray Malone, who, they were raising fundraiser for ALS awareness and for him. He is a member of our community, has been a coach in the community. And actually, Mayor, you remember Tabitha Malone, that's her son.
Okay.
And so, they were in the parking lot and had, it's. And so they were in the parking lot and had, it's seven-on-seven football tournament that day, so it was a lot of people that came out to support that family, so. And next slide is, the Smyrna Fire Department recently hosted our annual open house on Sunday, October the 13th, and attendees enjoyed a day filled with interactive, educational, and family-oriented activities, and we were happy to see so many in attendance and enjoying that event. So thank you to the Fire Department for the open house. And also, happy Halloween to everyone. I hope that it is also a safe, a safe time for everyone and their families tomorrow evening. And lastly, I would like to say, some of you all are aware, and some of you may not be aware, but the Peoples family experienced a loss. My Aunt Carolyn Peoples passed away this past Saturday, and I've gotten calls, and family members have gotten calls, and texts, and emails from people extending their condolences. And so I would like to thank everyone who reached out to me and to my cousins, Brian and Erica, to extend condolences in the loss of Carolyn Peoples. It was a sudden, a sudden loss, and so it's been a sorrowful time, so I would ask that you would keep the family in your prayers, because she was, she was a pillar of our community. She was a community servant, community leader, served on a lot of boards. She served here for the town. I think currently she was on the Historic Zoning Board. She was the chair. See, two years ago, she received the Volunteer of the Year Award. She's been active in Rotary, the J.C.'s when they were in existence, so many things that she has touched, and so many Peoples' lives that she's touched, not just here locally in our community, but in Rutherford County and across the state of Tennessee. So she is going to sorely, sorely be missed, but I want to ask that you will continue to keep Brian and Erica in your prayers, and keep the Peoples' family in your prayers, the Peoples' and the Akins family. She, that's her maiden name, Akins, her family's from Murfreesboro, but, you know, she's been in Smyrna a long, long time, and so, like I said, she's touched a lot of lives, and so I just want to thank all of you who have reached out, and also ask you to continue your prayers for the family. Thank you all.
H.G.
I do want to pass along my condolences to all of the Peoples' family. I've known Carolyn for thirty or forty years, probably, and she was, as you said, she was a pillar of the community, and when I heard that she had passed on Saturday morning, I mean, I sat there for fifteen or twenty minutes, probably, and just, you know, it really, it shook me. And I was thinking, you know, how many different areas of our community it's going to affect, you know, trying to fill her shoes. You know, we talk about her being in the Rotary, I mean, you know, there's, she wore many hats within the Rotary Club. She was going to be the incoming president next year, and we were looking forward to that, and was talking to her Thursday, and, you know, Carolyn's such a positive individual and so outgoing, but she was talking about, you know, how next year was going to be such a good year, and she was talking about the fish fry. She couldn't wait to get into that fish fry, because she was going to make it bigger and better than ever, you know? And, and I believe her, you know? I think that she would have done that. But, you know, I had the privilege, if you will, to have run against her in a couple of elections over the years, and she made a very worthy opponent and very upstanding opponent also. And, you know, I think that we, there's going to be times when, when we go through the future there, and we look at it and say, you know, Carolyn was here, this is what she would be doing. And so we just have to mark it up there as God's will being done, that she had done all that he wanted her to do, but her memory will live on with us, so. We'll miss her. We will miss her. I have a couple of slides. First one, Smyrna Lions Club Bean Dinner. We enjoyed another great Smyrna Lions Club Bean Dinner, thanks to the Smyrna Lions Club and the Senior Activity Center of Smyrna for hosting. I think it was a good turnout, and I know I enjoyed it, and one thing's about the Lions Club Bean Dinner, it's always one of those where you can go in and reacquaint with people and see your friends from around town, but a good time was had by all. My next one is, love where you live. Help keep Smyrna litter free. And then, we have a sub-note here that says, "In Shop Local," and I don't, I think they both should have equal standing, Heather, so...
Multiple slides.
There you go, there you go. But, as Raquel also said, tomorrow night being Halloween, drive carefully, and buy your candy locally. Thanks.
Dan?
You know, I'm still looking for words for Carolyn, and I haven't found them, and I think that's just a tribute to her, because you just can't figure out how you can sum up what she meant to me, what she meant to my wife, Donna, to the community. You just can't sum it up in words, and words seem to do it injustice, but to the Peoples' family and to the Akin family, my sincerest, sincerest condolences for her loss. I do have a slide. As the leaves begin to fall, please remember to place your leaves in a biodegradable leaf and lawn bag, and place the bags next to the street for pickup. Leaf pickup will occur on the regular brush route. Please remember, we are unable to pick up plastic bags. H.G. has volunteered that he has two leaf blowers and a pack of Beech Nut, and if you need him, he's retired and ready to go.
I have three leaf blowers.
Okay, sorry, three. That's all.
Thanks, Tim. Jerry?
I think I've got a couple of slides. The first one, on Saturday, I had the privilege of attending the Smyrna High School Hall of Fame induction. This is, I guess, on the right-hand side, are those that were inducted. You've got Kevin Black, you've got Drew Davenport, Phyllis Hall, Cameron Henderson, Jimmy Langford, and Tom Sage. They're all very deserving, and I think, well, I know Drew and Johnny were in the first group of soccer players that were put in the Hall of Fame, and Phyllis was basketball, and Cameron was wrestling, and Jimmy Langford was baseball, and Tom Sage was basketball. Also in that group was the 2013 State Championship softball team. If you win a championship as a team, that goes into the Hall of Fame as well, so congratulations to them. On the left-hand side, there's a picture of Randy Travis, Tom Sage, myself, and then Coach Rakes. I was able to play with Tom as a, when I was a sophomore, and Tom was a senior, and Randy was a senior, and Mr. Rakes, or we still call him Coach Rakes, was our coach that year, so the, very well-deserving, and congratulations to that group.
Let me say something about Tom, if I may, real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
I worked for the Smyrna Parks Department for many years, and he was very integral in putting a lot of the foundation of what we do today, and Mike's done a worthy job filling Tom's shoes, but Tom had some big old feet, if you can see, he's a big guy.
Well, Tom's always been very complimentary to all of us for what we do, because he did serve Parks and Recreation for a long time, and I think he sees the fruits of the labor in us and past council members that have made sure our Parks and Recs Department was always something to be proud of, so I appreciate Tom any time I see him saying, "You guys are doing a great job, and we appreciate you."
Yeah, and I appreciate you guys bringing that up, because I meant to say that as well, so thank you for bringing that in. Okay, the, this has, I guess it says here, "It was a frightening good time at the Halloween in the Park in the SOAC Friday night, fright nights. Patrons enjoyed hayrides, costume contest, trick-or-treating, Smyrna High School haunted maze, and more." The, there was an estimate of about five thousand people there Saturday. It was presented by the Smyrna Parks and Recreation and sponsored by the Smyrna Gas Company. We do want to thank SOAC staff, Parks, Rec, Police, Fire, and everyone that contributed to make this a event a success. It was a, I think everyone that came had a great time, and just watching those kids, and I think everybody, and towards the bottom on the right-hand side, wanted to get their picture made with Shrek and his group, that was, it just seemed like everybody was in line to get their picture made with them, but...
They were in the adult category.
Did they?
Yeah.
Well, they should have. They did a great, great job with that costumes. Okay, just as everyone else has said, my condolences to Carolyn's family, Raquel, and everyone. I, every time you saw Miss Carolyn, she always had a smile on her face, and she was always just so nice, and I really didn't know her that well until I came on council, but just getting to know her over the last six years has been my benefit, and she is going to be missed. She, she was involved in everything, and she did it to the best that she could, and she just left everybody better. She made everybody better. I know, I guess it was Tuesday, some of you may have saw it, but Neil Orin at Channel Two did a very nice discussion about her on Channel Two News on Tuesday morning, and just what she meant to him when he was at the Wings of Freedom Fish Fry. So she's going to be missed. It's certainly a void in our, our community, and we, she won't be, she won't be forgotten, though, so. All we got.
All right, I've got a few slides. We'll start with the first one. This is a group from the Rotary Club through our Adopt a Roadway program, cleaning up trash along Harts Branch Road near Old Jones Mill. I tried to pick out who these people are in the picture, and the picture's so far away, I can't make it, can't make them out, but it's all Rotary members, and I'm sure I know all of them, but I can't pick them out in the picture, just a little too small, but thank you for what they're doing. H.G., they love where they live, to your slide, and we're grateful for their hard work, dedication. If you or your organization would like to be a part of impactful programs like this, please visit townofsmyrna.org and look for the Adopt a Highway Roadway section, or you can call six one five four five nine ninety-seven sixty-six and ask about our Adopt a Roadway or Stream cleanup programs. We can always use help, as you can see by this pile here, there's a pretty big pile of stuff. All right, slide number two, congratulations to the first team of Middle Tennessee and the community options on their recent ribbon cuttings. Want to welcome them to our community. We get ribbon cuttings almost every week. I'd say at least two, three times a month or so, two, three times a month, so that's a sign of a growing community, and it's also nice to continue to welcome people to town that want to come, so we're glad to have them. Another one that has recently come along, we haven't done ribbon cutting for, but I enjoyed Subculture, who is in the Red Bicycle, the old Red Bicycle location. H.G. and I actually had lunch there, was it Saturday, H.G., and got to meet, got to meet the husband and wife, or the couple, I don't know if they're husband and wife, the couple that's running it. They have a location in Nashville, and this is their second location. Excellent food, very high-quality chef. He had, he's been a chef for twenty-plus years, and he makes all of the bread and dough homemade every morning. So the sandwich I had had a, had a really nice roll on it that was homemade, the waffles for the chicken waffles are homemade, so all of the bread goods are homemade, so give it a try, it's extremely good. So Subculture there. Next slide is Veterans Day. Dave, you mentioned this, but November 11th at 11:00 a.m., we'll have our Veterans Day program at the Jeff Cus Memorial. This is becoming a fun transit, a fun tradition that we do every year. I don't know who the speaker will be this year, but we always have a good speaker and usually lay a reef. You got a speaker, Todd? You working on that? Okay. You look like you work sure.
I heard you were talking to some guy from Florida named Santucci.
Dave Santucci? Yes, all right, all right, we'll see. So Monday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m., come visit us at, at the Jeff Cus Memorial on Sam Ridley Parkway. Also, my condolences, Raquel, to your family, Erica and Pick, and the rest of the family. Carolyn was one of the first people that called me in 2016, and I decided to run, and she called me and told me that she, you know, admired people stepping up and taking an act, taking activity in their community, and she wanted to wish me well. I didn't really know her before that, so it was kind of out of the blue, but that's the kind of person she was. She wanted me to feel like that I was welcomed and a part of the situation that we were going to be in. She always had positive, uplifting words to say. I can't tell you how many times she told me that she was praying for me or would pray for me, and I've always, always appreciated her words. If I saw her in a room, I would usually go seek her out, because I knew she would say something's going to make me feel better, no matter what was going on that day, and that's just who she was. I talked to her just a few weeks ago on the phone for about twenty-five or thirty minutes, and it was a conversation about an issue, and by the time the call ended, we were laughing and having fun and talking about how trivial the issue really was in the grand scheme of things, so she will definitely be missed. And I agree, a pillar of the community, I mean, somebody that we all looked up to, and she'll, she'll be missed. So to your family and the Akins family, I honestly didn't know Pick's name was Brian. I've never called him anything but Pick, so I didn't know that, so to Erica and I guess Brian, we'll pray for them.
Thanks.
And Prince, I mean, I know he's going to have a big loss there.
Grayson.
Grayson, yeah.
Prince Grayson is what she calls him.
Yeah, I always call him Prince, so he's going to have, he's got a big loss there, too.
So my slide, I think, will pop up here in a second, yep. Don't forget to fall back one hour this weekend. Daylight savings time ends Sunday, November the 3rd at 2:00 a.m. For those of you who are still awake, you can do it then, but most of us are going to set it back before that. Turn your clock back, don't forget to test your smoke alarms, your carbon monoxide detectors, and change the batteries according to the manufacturer's directions for safety. Replace the alarm if it's more than ten years old. So that's a reminder, you won't be late for church, so. Mike, you had some guys that took care of a neighbor for me this week, and they were just so pleasant out there. I watched them do their work. I was home, and I walked over and talked to them all, and pleasant people, they came in, did their work cheerfully, and I just want to give kudos to them. We had some letters come in. I didn't send a letter, but tonight, I just want to make sure publicly that they got some credit for doing a great job over there, and tell them thank you. Dave, first kind of official night in the chair, right? So welcome in for that. I know you've been here working already for a while, but seeing you there and seeing Peach over there with some stress relief coming off of him, I do want to say to Jeff, Jeff, thank you. You filled in very admirably. You did a wonderful job while we were looking for somebody, and so thank you for the job that you did interim until Dave came to fill the chair.
Well done, Dave.
I want to say to Raquel, our condolences to all the Peoples and the family as well for the loss of Carolyn. You know, in 2010 was the first time I had to actually run a campaign. She did as well. She ran for town council at the time, and I can recall many conversations with her during that time, where we would be at events or whatever, we would cross paths quite a bit, always asked me how I was doing, and encouraged me, first time I'd ever done anything like that, and so civility was strong during campaigns, and so you all have heard me say, I wish politics wasn't as dirty and ugly as it gets sometimes, but it does, and she was an example, really, of the opposite of that, so I just appreciated that, and so I wish my condolences for her. Her license plate, she lives a stone's throw from where I do, and I'd pass her a lot, her license plate says, "I plan," and she was a planner, but one of the things she always planned for was her eternal life. So I give credit to her for being that kind of person and always sharing her faith out there in the community as well. Candidates are having to run... Candidates are having to run, as we all know, there's an election going on, and in my opening prayer, I, I mentioned that, and, you know, we just have to be civil with one another and get through this election and hope that the temperature and the tone of politics finally takes a break, I hope it does, but I want to say to Steve and Raquel, and to all the others that are out there putting themselves out there, this is not easy, sometimes you might think it is, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that a lot of people don't understand. So for anybody that's unselfish and willing enough to jump into the fray and put themselves out there, I have respect for each and every one of those people. They may not know what's going to hit them if they win, but welcome in and we'll work with you if you do, and so I just want to say that to all the candidates and their families for being a part of this, because it takes a family of support, I promise you it does. Halloween is here, and we mentioned Halloween in the park. Steve, thank you for helping me M.C. that, Mary Esther, we, we tag teamed that whole event Saturday. H.G., awesome judge, you did a great job being a judge over there, so thank you to all of you on the council here that pitched in, Jerry was there with Patty, and, did I see you there? I didn't see you there, did I?
No, I was not able to.
Okay, I, I knew I didn't spot you, but I didn't want to go without mentioning you if you were there.
I didn't, I hated to miss it.
And Tim, I think you had something going on with your family, too, so.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we have another judge sitting over here that, I mean.
Well, Judge Santucci.
There were a couple of times when, when I, when I think that, you know, two of the judges were not agreeing on something, and he managed to mediate and.
That's his job. Were you, were you actually one of the ones that did not agree with him?
Oh, heck no.
Okay, so you're, so they're going to work together, okay?
Absolutely.
So anybody that did not win the costume contest, you can get in touch with Dave and H.G. if you're unhappy with their results.
One of the toughest ones was that little robe in the corner of that picture.
The Captain Cusse Transformers?
The, the plane.
Yeah.
I mean, it's hard to believe that in Smyrna he came in second, but I mean, that tells you how good some of the other costumes were.
It was a transformer, it was so good.
Huh?
It was a transformer, it was so good.
Yeah.
All the kids from, from three and up, all the way up to adults, we have categories, and it's always so fun for me to be up there with them and listening to them talk, and their parents are out there cheering them on, you know, "Do your dance," and, you know, all that kind of stuff, and so it's just a fun event, and a lot of vendors, Smyrna Gas Department's a sponsor, it's just always, Mike, you and your team out there doing an awesome job, so with that, I'm done.
Okay.
That's what judging that event, I did that a couple of years ago, it's one of the hardest things of the whole thing. When I was asked this time, I think Marty called me and asked if I would help with the event, and I said, "As long as I'm not judging." I didn't want to be the judge, but, but yeah, it's, it's tough to judge, because they're all so good.
Okay, Smyrna Parks and Recreation Department is seeking nominations for the 2024 Kenneth Coon Victory Lifetime Service Award and Young Leader Award. Nomination forms can be located on our website, and deadline for nominations is November 14th, so coming up shortly, so you, if you know a deserving individual in Smyrna for the Lifetime Service Award or Young Leader Award, please make sure that you nominate them. We want to say welcome to Dave, we recently held a community reception for our new town manager, and we would just want to thank so many people from the town for coming out and supporting Dave, so thank you for everybody who did that. We look forward to this year's Christmas tree lighting ceremony, it's going to be here before we know it, come out and enjoy the fun as we kick off the holiday season. The ceremony will take place Tuesday, November 26th, at the Smyrna Train Depot, the event is scheduled from 6:00 to 8:00. You can visit with Santa and get your free picture with Santa and Mrs. Claus, courtesy of the Smyrna Fire Department and Police Department. Save the date for the town's annual Christmas parade tradition, it's the 49th Annual Town of Smyrna Christmas Parade and Food Drive, and it'll be held Sunday, December 8th at 2:00 p.m. on Lowry Street. We are accepting applications for entry in this year's parades. Organizations wishing to participate can complete the application online or in person at Smyrna Town Hall, so we encourage you to participate in our parade. Couple of items, Chief, y'all did a great job on the open house, lots of fun, it was a perfect day. I don't, any idea how many you had?
About around eleven.
About eleven hundred, wow, that was amazing. Wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on the forum that we had here, I thought it was a great event, and I was really pleased that all the candidates participated, so thank you to the League of Women Voters. Dave and I got to speak to the Chamber Diplomats, that was what, was that your first day, second day, pretty close?
Day three.
Yeah, day three, three, there you go. And it was nice to share with them what we have going on here in the town of Smyrna, so I think there was a lot of things they didn't realize. We just had the Smyrna High School Stewart's Creek High School football game, I think it was the first time that Stewart's Creek has ever beat Smyrna before, so, but it was a fun event, it's great to see so many people from the community out supporting both schools. Mike, and all the departments, because I know it's not just Parks and Rec that it takes to put on Halloween in the park, we appreciate you, it is nice to know that there is a family-friendly event where kids can come out and participate and know that they're safe, and that they can trick-or-treat and get to enjoy the community, so thanks for that. Want to remind everybody that the last day to early vote is tomorrow here in Rutherford County. You can, you can vote at any location in the county, for, most polling locations are open from 9:00 to 6:00, I think the square stays open till 7:00, but here in the town of Smyrna, you can do it right here behind Town Hall, or the Grace Church on Hazelwood is also a polling location, so tomorrow from 9:00 to 6:00. Election Day will be Tuesday, polls will open from 7:00 to 7:00, and here in Smyrna, you can vote at Stewart's Borough, Smyrna Middle, Smyrna Elementary, Cedar Grove, Stewart's Creek Middle, Rock Springs Elementary, and Brown's Chapel, so come out and have your voice heard. Couple of condolences tonight, Dow Smith's mother passed away, so condolences to Dow. Marisa Wooten Morrow, who went to school with us, some of you all may know Marisa, yeah, her mother also passed away. I also wanted to pass along condolences to the Peoples' family. Erica called me early Saturday morning, and I, I couldn't believe it, I had to ask her twice, you know, was what she was saying accurate, and Mom and I were talking about it, you never saw Carolyn, that she wasn't smiling and didn't have something positive to say, and if you had a project to do or a task, Carolyn is the one that you wanted in your corner, because she was going to get it done, and she was going to get it done on time and probably under budget. So we absolutely will miss Carolyn here in the community, but Carolyn has left a foundation for those that come after her to continue to build on, and Mark, I agree with what you said, you never doubted Carolyn's faith, ever, and so I know that she is in a better place, I know she is probably organizing something in heaven right now, she's getting something done, so she'll be missed, but continue to keep their family in your prayers, they definitely can use it, so. Okay, anything else? Nothing else, we're adjourned.